It is 5:30, so we'll call the October 18th meeting to order. Mrs. Twitty and Mrs. Callen could not be with us tonight. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any agenda modifications that any board members need? I just have a very short report. One thing is to remind board members and staff that Thursday at noon is the second Springfield Public Schools Hall of Fame induction luncheon. Ginger Holmes-Robinson, Doug Pitt, and Bucky Buckner will be our crew to induce into the Springfield Hall of Fame. And I think it's going to be a great event. They'll be there, family members will be there. Jim Anderson will emcee it, so it'll be a good event. The other thing, just for the minutes and for everyone to know, is that Donna Pettiford of our PTA locally has been installed as Missouri PTA State President-elect. So that's just like Mr. Lee following from here to do bigger and better things on the state level. So thanks to her. That's all I have. Dr. Ritter?
I have a couple of things. First of all, now, just like to make a real quick announcement as far as enrollment. We still are kind of touching up our figures, but it looks like we're going to have about 235-plus students in addition to what we had a year ago. And so, you know, the vote the board took at the last record meeting was really needed. So anyway, and really what's interesting about that is that really north-central schools are at record numbers. Weaver, Robertson, Williams is seeing a nice growth as well. And then also, Weller is just slightly up. But really, that region right through there. Now, in the middle school, the same thing. And we're seeing a slight number increase in the middle school, but most of the numbers are in the elementary. And we're down just a little bit in the high schools, so I thought I'd highlight that a little bit. We did have a joint venture. Really, it was more the city who put in a nice little overhead bridge by Williams. And it's just, it's the best bridge I've ever seen. And we had a grand opening. And Jennifer Webb, the principal there, of course, is a class act. And had the kids go over that. And of course, the kids, when they went over it, they were jumping. And they says, "This doesn't move." And in other words, they're saying the old one did. But anyway, it's as solid as a rock. So I encourage any of you who have time to go over there and walk over the bridge and say that you've done that. But anyway, I want to thank them for that. One last thing I want to mention is, of course, the Cardinals are in the World Series. And I just want to ask Parker McKenna, because he's going to be attending that game tomorrow night, if he could tell us who the first baseman is for the Cardinals. Oh, he does know. Did somebody tell you that I was going to ask?
No, he didn't.
Okay, okay.
Passes and gets to go.
He gets to go, okay. But anyway.
I'll get his autograph for you, Dr. Ritter.
Oh, I bet you will. I really don't want it. I'm a Rockies fan. But anyway, just thought I'd let you know that it's a little rocky for me. Anyway, sorry, I did digress there. Okay, that's all I have at this time.
And I think we have no comments from the public. So let's move on to 5.01, which is the October quarterly report. I suspect that Dr. Goodman's somewhere there, ready to...
Dr. Goodman, please. He's got a cold. Now, the water doesn't mean it's going to go forever. It's just that he's got a cold.
Fighting a bit of a cold this evening. Good evening. It's my pleasure to present to you the first quarterly report for the 2011-2012 school year. This evening, for the first iteration of the report for this year, we wanted to front-load and discuss a couple of adjustments that had been made regarding comparability that you'll see presented this evening in future versions of the report for '11-'12. And the first piece is that one district has been dropped for the purpose of comparability, and that was based upon feedback received from the Board of Education. And so that now leaves us with four comparable units for the purpose of comparability, those four being Rockwood, North Kansas City, Columbia, and then the regional cohort, those districts that share a border with us. The district is investigating and looking into the 20 largest Missouri districts for other potential candidates that could be used for comparability. And when we're looking at those districts, we're looking really at two factors: size and percent of students receiving a free and reduced-price lunch. And we will also give consideration to the role that comparability plays when looking at revisions in the next version of SP5 that is currently being examined. I would also add, and put it up as a bullet point here, but from the factor of looking at the comparable units when comparing our results, previously, we had looked against five. And so to get at strengths or opportunities, it was kind of a three-of-five threshold. Well, in reducing that, we're now at a three-of-four threshold. So just straight percent, 60% versus 75% for just ranking our performance relative. So it raises the bar in that regard for purposes of comparability to meet or exceed the majority of comparables. And then inversely, also, if we, before, we're looking at two-of-five as less than a majority, now we're looking at just two-of-four. So we've kind of condensed that in by just going to the four comparables. This evening, we have the following opportunities for improvement: updates and strengths to present to you. In the opportunity for improvement category, we have mathematics, looking at the percent of students and comparable performance. In the updates area, we have communication arts. And I apologize, I've left science off of there as well. And then in the strengths, we have the percent of staff retained. Recall that generally, the first quarterly report is when the MAP pieces come in related to Goal 1 student achievement. So as has been the precedent, previous year's MAP is the predominant amount of content this evening. Into the first opportunity for improvement, then, we have mathematics: percent of students scoring proficient, advanced, and comparable performance. The aggregate measure presented here and also on page 26 in the report shows Springfield as usual in blue. We see Rockwood per previous years as well, setting the mark at about 70% of students, with regional cohort and Springfield grouped together there with purple and blue, followed by North Kansas City and Columbia. This measure does aggregate in all grades 3 through 8, as well as the high school end-of-course assessment. So this is kind of a big global number. However, the grade-level breakdowns for 3 through 8 and the EOC are presented separately in the report, as is the cohort look. On the update for communication arts, similar measure. This represents the aggregate of 3 through 8 and high school. And I'm sorry, I misspoke. I said English two minutes ago. That would have been the Algebra 1 on the previous one. This one would capture EOC. And again, Springfield in blue. And so we can see our performances and percentages grouped right by Columbia and North Kansas City, with the regional cohort just a little bit above, and then Rockwood exceeding all the rest of the units. Similar for science. In science, science is not done every grade 3 through 8. It's only grades 5 and 8. And the end-of-course to aggregate in here is the Biology 1 end-of-course assessment. And so we see Springfield in blue again, right, once again, with North Kansas City and Columbia, regional cohort a little bit above, and then Rockwood highest of all those presented. The strength identified with this report this evening represents the percent of staff retained. This measure represents all staff across the district and is not disaggregated out by type. And so in getting there, we then look and translate that percent of staff retained out. And we can see that we were up just about a quarter of a percent, just under a quarter of a percent, from 2009-2010, at just at 90% of staff retained. Relative to the goal that we have in SP5 for a maintenance of 85%, we can see that, once again, we have stayed above that target of 85%, and we also stayed right about where we were for the previous year. So in conclusion, then, this evening, we've identified the following opportunities: updates, and I apologize for not having science on there, I missed that, and strengths. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have at this time relative to this content or any other pieces within the report.
Dr. Goodman, in looking at just individual subgroup scores of students advanced and proficient, it appears that we, you know, on some, we're dropping. Some are static. But when you look at, then, the percent of our schools making AYP, we're near the top. So would you, what I'm guessing, but it's been a few years, so I may not be guessing correctly here, but is that due to the fact that we, they consider the on-track-for-proficiency statistic in AYP, where you may not see that when you're looking at specific subgroup performance? But when you're looking at overall schools making AYP, we get that piece added in?
The, so for example, to get at the idea of subgroups, pull one up here. So say one like, we'll come back here to African-American, a chart like this. Is that kind of what you're in regards to? This does reflect the proficient, advanced, and the growth as well. So it is in there as well. And going to this idea of the percent of schools, that does factor in at each building as well. So it, so when we're doing AYP in the report, we are bringing forward all those rolled into one.
So this is good. This looks good.
Yeah, this, this table two, it was an interesting one. This was one that we had actually put together whenever AYP across the state was released to get a sense of kind of what our buildings looked like. And so we can see that we had 12 of 51 make. And so, once we got the comparables, it was interesting that that 23% of our schools making was really second only to the 25% of schools making in Parkway noted. It's going to let me highlight. Parkway, and then Blue Springs. So yeah, it was, and also, I'm sorry, Liberty. I didn't show that one there. So we had three districts with 25% of schools, and then we came in at 23% of schools making.
I just want to comment more than anything. And just looking through the whole report, it was very evident the impact of NCLB on, not the impact, but the results of the NCLB reporting criteria of failing schools and those that don't make AYP. I mean, there was one chart in there, it's just a complete southeast direction of, which is basically the chart for that, yeah, that one right there, of those that making AYP based on why NCLB is not working. And I just thought that was, and it was pretty prevalent in there that, you know, there's no way that they're going to make it when you just look at the number of schools or the subgroups that make it, that are being qualified as failing schools now, when, as Ms. Frederick said, they're not really failing. If you look at the growth and you look at the improvements, but when you look at the arbitrary targets, they are considered failing. And I just think that's a real telling thing as to why that thing needs to be scrapped or redone. And to me, it's showing it more and more the farther we go as to why it didn't work, or why it's not working. And, I mean, to me, that was the first one in all the quarterly reports that, to me, just really kind of hit, hitching ahead with a hammer that said, there's totally obvious why, or not why, the problem with NCLB.
And, you know, it's interesting that whenever we do the release of AYP, you know, usually in August started the, really before school even starts, we're really kind of looking at it only for ourselves. And so we kind of have this picture, you know, and so we know, like, just shown, okay, we had 12 make. It's not until we can actually get the comparison and see, you know, as something like this would demonstrate, that that's, you know, actually above those we're looking at. So that's where the context, I would add, helps as well.
Well, a comment and a question, following up on Jerry. I mean, you look at some of those figures on statewide, and you look at, for example, Rockwood. If you go back to the slide there that shows the top 20 school districts, you know, and you have Rockwood, which is kind of the gold standard, you know, for high-performing schools in the state of Missouri. You know, it's what we benchmark ourselves against and what we're generally always striving to come up to as opposed to, you know, stay with them. So, and you see them only having 13% of their schools making AYP. So I think it does kind of show that. Question, can you refresh my recollection? I know we're going to talk about this when we start revamping some of these quarterly reports, but we've got an opportunity for improvement with our math scores. What's the leadership do with that opportunity for improvement? What's the next step that's done after it's reported to the board that that's an opportunity for improvement?
Dr. Ritter, would you like me to take in sort of, or you?
Basically, what we do there is that, you know, it's an opportunity for improvement, and eventually, through operations, it goes into where you break it by site, then it goes into a school improvement plan. And by site, that is the target. And in many of the sites, of course, math would be a target to improve. And what's interesting is, is they don't really list the math score. They're listing performance series. In other words, they want to, they want, they start identifying. And they're doing, I believe they're doing that as we speak, but they're identifying the, because the performance series is all done now, the first part of the year. And so they're able to identify particular targets, and they're taking it as a staff and then putting it at certain goals. And that's how they do that. And then eventually, they check. Then they'll have the performance series middle of the year, and they'll check on the progress there as well. And so that's how we address that.
And this is maybe a comment more directed toward the future and how we get this information. But it'd certainly be nice, for me as a board member, to kind of check back with some of these things from three or four years ago or two years ago, saying, you remember, we identified this as an opportunity for improvement? Here's what we did, and here's where we are now relative to that opportunity for improvement we identified three years ago? As opposed to every quarter getting a fresh set of opportunities for improvement, study, you know, strength? Kind of a check back for the board to say, you know, this was identified as an opportunity for improvement third quarter of 2009. You might have forgotten about it, but here's what we've done in the interim. Here's where we are. Either we're still lagging there, or, you know, we closed that loophole and moved ahead.
That's a conversation we had at retreat, the cabinet retreat this summer, as our going back and taking care of that, and taking care of that meeting we're reporting back on, doing a check and then reporting back on that. So we did have that conversation.
And I don't know that we need as much detail on those kind of check backs, but kind of a, you know, some figures, facts and figures and data to show, you know, here's what we did on that, here's where we are. And it's either going in the right direction or it's not. It's stagnant, and we need to do something else. Because I, for one, as a board member, don't kind of see that from report to report.
Sure.
I think I'm reading the chart right on page 29, where it's, just using the one, the bar graph. Wouldn't the fifth-grade math, which is the last one in year 11, be our fourth graders in the year 10 and the third graders in the year nine? That'd be the, basically, the same large groups? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, when I, I thought that was right. And still understanding we've got big mobility and we've, people move in and out, but when you're looking at large group scores, which can just tell you only so much, then, you know, when I looked at that and the advanced and proficient and compared third graders to the next year, fourth, next year, they were fourth graders, and then fifth graders, we're making progress in those top two levels. And the lowest level is, I mean, we obviously are decreasing our other two levels. So to me, there's only so much that large group scores can tell you about. And looking at those, that helped me the most in just looking to see, are we making progress in those areas? And those graphs helped me to go back through and look at the progress large groups had made in our district.
Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Goodman.
Thank you.
Next information item is our quarterly bond report. From Mr. Webb, I suspect.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Ritter, it is my pleasure to present to you this evening a quarterly update on our 2009 bond projects. And first, we'll take a look at some of our air conditioning projects. We have Jared and Reed, which we've finally closed out those projects, finishing through the commissioning process. Here's Boyd Elementary. And at Boyd, the construction is mostly complete on the air conditioning, the testing and balancing, and the commissioning phases of the project will begin in the next few weeks. This picture here shows some of the additional steel structure we needed to put in the mechanical space to help support the new piping that you see in the picture in the mechanical room.
By the way, that's a very complicated site. It is unbelievable. But anyway, you're doing a good job.
And that's a great picture of the artery of the building now, those main pipes feeding everything. The next site is Robertson. Again, in this project, also, the construction is mostly complete. Our testing and balancing and commissioning to begin in the next few weeks. Here's a picture in the Library Media Center of the spiral ductwork feeding the, feeding that space. Roundtree, the construction is complete. Our testing and balancing is almost complete, and the commissioning is also in progress. And here you see a picture with the new drop ceiling in. At York Elementary, the HVAC construction is mostly complete. Testing and balancing has started. Commissioning will follow that in a few weeks. And this picture is from the all-purpose room, showing the spiral duct going through that space. The three remaining air conditioning projects that we have: Sunshine, Phelps, and Teft. Sunshine, the redesign has been completed. We're reviewing those documents, getting them ready for bidding. We anticipate bidding that coming out this next month in November. We will be spacing that between some of the other projects that I'll be showing you the timing on this evening. We will follow, then, with Phelps and Teft as those remaining projects. And those, we anticipate probably bidding in February of this next year. As I move to the main construction projects, starting with Hillcrest High School, we have officially received the FEMA approval letter of not just the grant, but approval of the construction documents so that we can go to bid on the project. Here is a rendering from the architects as to what that new cafeteria and storm shelter space will look like at Hillcrest.
Is that a back, a rear, a rear view?
Yes, here, you can see, this is basically that new addition.
Okay, I just want to point that out.
The dates that we are looking at with Hillcrest to be advertising here near the end of the month, on the 29th, to receive bids back on November 30th. And then we would bring a recommendation to the board at the combined meeting in December. Westport is the next project that we're looking at. And at Westport, we have also received the approval from FEMA to go ahead and bid. And actually, the Westport project is currently out on the street as we speak. I do want to remind the board, as I've alluded to in the past, we do anticipate that this project will come in above what we had originally planned for this project. And there's a number of factors that play into that, and I'd just like to touch on a few of those this evening. One of the first areas that you might recall that we did on the Hickory Hills project was a dual-serving line in the kitchen cafeteria area. So we could both have an elementary and a middle school serving area. At the time this project was planned, we didn't have that experience to see the result of how that project has worked. It's been a great success at Hickory, so we definitely wanted to include that in this project as well. As we've gotten into the design review with code officials, it's been determined that we will need to actually sprinkle the old portion of this building. So there's some added costs there. One of the things we looked at is, from community import, was a lot of feedback related to the relationship of space or keeping the elementary and the middle school students separated in this K8 building. So as we looked at accomplishing that through our circulation, the coordination of the shared space or the common spaces really dictated how the building was laid out. And the best way to lay that out really did reorient the building, putting the main entrance of the building facing the park. And if you were to draw a line through, through the building here, you would basically see how you separate between the elementary and the middle school side and those shared spaces basically being in the center. Another area that was very important to the community as we got into the project, as I'm sure the board can well remember, is the traffic congestion and flow that happened there is the gridlock on Golden. And with the, the way the building is oriented and how we have built out our property, the best way to accommodate working through that was really to go ahead and bring a new drive up separating between the school and the park, and also additional drive across the north end of the property as well to really help with that circulation. As I'll show you in another slide, and I've referenced the fact that we've really built out our property and we are there next to the park's property. Because we've really filled out our property, it will require us to do some additional grading, which will actually affect part of the park property. And our actual stormwater detention will be located on the south end of the park, down here, south of the tennis court area. I would like to just mention, too, that many districts actually hire an architect, design a project prior to going to a bond issue. We have not chosen to do that here, as we always want to take our projects to the public and get the community's support before we invest in doing that. And so I just wanted to mention that as well. I'm going to walk through some of the alternates that we are doing here in the project. Whoa. I apologize. Let me just go back and I'll do it a different way here. The first alternate that we're looking at is dealing with some additional parking space. I'm not going to go into every alternate, but as, as we look at the alternates, there's additional parking up in this area, and then some additional parking down here, which will be an alternate, an add-alternate to the project. Let me go past. As you can see, here, basically, what we're showing is this is the building in this area. The dotted red line represents our property for the, our district property, and the park's property is all along the side here. The next alternate that we're dealing with, looking at, is a rain canopy, which would be for the bus drop-off area. There's another canopy, which would be by the main entrance, a rain canopy in this area. And then the big alternate is, there are four classrooms that are an alternate on this, on the new wing. And as I mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, we have already advertised this project. It is currently out to bid. We will receive our bids back on November 17th, and we will bring a recommendation to the board on the combined meeting December 13th as well. Our Jeffries project, this is the project that, the one project, we have not gotten official, the approval from FEMA on the bidding documents. We anticipate getting that shortly. But one of the things that we did do as we look at this project is, in anticipation of the project, is this bus loop here, which connects to our side street. One of the things that we've had a continuous issue at Jeffries is the buses getting into gridlock on scenic. This project, this portion was done through major repair this past summer to get the buses there in a more timely manner. Has been a very positive thing and was done in anticipation of where the new addition's going to go for Jeffries. Pending FEMA's approval, if we get that either by the end of this month or... Pending FEMA's approval, if we get that either by the end of this month or the first week in November, we would look at advertising this project November 19th, getting our bids back December 20th, and bringing a recommendation at a January meeting. Our Glendale High School, we had the electrical and technology infrastructure upgrades on this project. The construction has all been complete. We're just going through some closeout documents so we can close that project out.
Excuse me.
As we look at our technology, the Phase 1 training at 65%, Phase 2 at 46%, and our smartboard installations are at 71%, and they are ahead of schedule at this point. And we always love to show a picture of our students working with our new technology. And with that, I say thank you, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Went? Just one comment, in talking with some of the Joplin School Board members at our state meeting a couple of weeks ago, they're, they're having huge hurdles with FEMA. Of course, it's a bigger scope of problems, but it looks like we'll probably be on the street with most of our bids before they hit it, and maybe we'll realize some cost savings from...
Yes, as I understand, I believe that the hospital is really going to be probably gearing up come March, and the schools probably in April, as far as their bidding.
Looks like our timing may be good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Went. Good. You can see the list of action items that we took at the study session two weeks ago. Action items for separate consideration, we have our transportation routes. Mr. Chodas.
Thank you. We do this every year. Missouri law requires the board approve school bus routes no later than the end of October. We currently have 128 route buses transporting an average of 6,800 students daily, and the buses travel approximately 8,600 miles each day for routes. Just for the board's information, I did just look at what the total revenue was for transportation last year versus the cost. Total revenue was about $1.5 million. Total cost was just under $7 million for a return of about 22.7%.
1. ... what was our revenue?
1.5 million versus 6.9 million.
Thanks.
6.9 million, we're spending 1.5 million, we're getting?
Yes.
So we make it up in volume?
There you go. And we ask that the board approve the bus routes as developed by the Transportation Department. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Chodas.
Just one quick question, and I didn't go back and look. The 6,800 kids, is, is that up, down, about the same, as far as number of students that we...
We are, we are up.
It sounded up.
150 kids or so.
Who's, who's that that's talking?
Something on the wall.
Oh, there he is.
With enrollment in the district being up, we've also seen some increase as well. It's hard to gauge with absenteeism, you know, across the board, but we are up as well.
But that seemed higher than what it had been in the past, so I would just, okay.
I would take a motion that the Board of Education approve the bus routes as developed by the Transportation Department.
So move.
Mr. Lee? A second?
Second.
Mr. Renner?
Mr. Renner, yeah. Has it come up yet? There it is.
There it is, okay. Thank you. And Mr. Chodas, while you're up there, you can go ahead and enlighten us with the treasurer's report.
All right. If you will look at the second page of the attachment, you'll see the financial statement for the month of September. Property tax collections were down $42,000 from last September's collections. The good news is, year-to-date, we're up $139,000. Though, we recently received some bad news in that the current month's receipt came in and, and that 139,000 is about gone, so we're, we're about even with last year. Sales tax for September was up 99,000, and year-to-date, we're up 295,000. We don't receive the sales tax revenue information until later in the month, so I do not have that for October at this time. Looking at the financial statement, you'll see that the total revenue is tracking right along with last year's. We're at 11.35% this year versus 11.89% last year. And on expenditures, we're currently at 13.39%, and last year we were at 13.73%, so everything so far is, is coming in according to budget. We ask that the board approve the treasurer's report.
Questions? I would take a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Mr. Renner?
I'm in.
Mr. Lee, thank you. And we have several routine action items that we can present as submitted. Do I have a motion for that?
So move.
Mr. Lee? Okay.
I am, but I'm, I think I'm there.
All right. Routine action items, I would take a motion to approve them as submitted.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Getting easier all the time, Mrs. Lee. And then we have several general consent items that you see listed that we've talked about before. And I would take a motion to approve the general consent items as submitted by the administration.
So move.
Mr. Renner? It's okay, we don't have a ballgame to get to tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry, was Mr. Renner or Mr. Lee?
Mr. Renner and Dr. Frederick. That's fine. Yeah. Okay, we'll vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Information items are listed for your review. You'll remember, we talked about those at the last study session, and I think we have no comments from the public on non-agenda items. Legislative report. Dr. Ritter?
We have, I'd like to, Mr. Lee, if you would, I'm going to give you a recommendation as far as legislative priorities, and this is kind of a first glance, and I'd like to have you look at these. This is something I'd like to discuss further during the study session, on the first, I think it is. And I just want to highlight just two things. First of all, there's only two things that I've added, pretty powerful things, and that's the first paragraph there where it says Springfield Public Schools encourages the Missouri Legislature to use the Missouri Public Education Vision Project to direct their work for the children of Missouri. Now, I, I do feel that, Mr. Lee and I have discussed this, that the board probably should pass a resolution to support that, probably before this is accepted as something that we would list. But either way, the board can decide which way they want to go on that. And the, the only other thing I've added is at the very, the very last piece, so it's added something at the beginning and at the end, and that is to oppose the fair tax initiative. I don't know what else to say about that initiative other than to say it that way because I just don't know enough about it. And, and we're just going on the advice of what was experienced at the Missouri School Board Convention, so. Anyway, I thought I'd give this to you tonight, don't expect you to discuss it. I do think we need to discuss it at the study session, but just to kind of see if there's any kind of questions. Now, I don't know if Mr. Lee, if Missouri School Board Association has done anything yet. I think they have resolutions, but I don't think they've done it, taken any kind of action. And I know the Missouri Association of School Administrators has not taken action. I know S, the MST, Missouri School Teachers Association, as well as Missouri National Education Association, has also put together resolutions but haven't taken action yet. So that's pretty much where everybody's at.
We meet next week, so hopefully we'll come out of there, and my understanding is that we will be drafting some draft resolutions for boards to take so that there'll be some consistency there and get those out to everybody, so hopefully we would have something.
By the study session, maybe.
That's what I'm hoping for, by the study session, we'd have something.
That's, that's the first, and that's Tuesday after the meeting.
We're kind of up against a wall a little bit because we are, I think we're set for the 17th.
Right.
For legislative discussion with our legislators, so I'd just really kind of like to get this out and, and just kind of work it through on the first, if that's okay with everybody.
Yep. Which brings me to remind everybody that four o'clock here is the legislative reception with our local elected representatives.
On the 17th, yeah.
Yeah, 17th.
On the 17th.
November.
Are we going to have any presentation on the fair tax?
I would like to have that. The more information we can get, the better.
Well, I mean...
You mean invite Mr. Moody or somebody like that?
I don't know, but, you know, facts are facts, and, and you can't change the facts. You can change your opinion about the facts and, and your opinion about what you should do, but, but, you know, the way I understand most of the, most of the petitions that have been written, you know, in no way, shape, or form is it good for public schools in the state of Missouri. Okay? So, and that's based on what it would do to the, the ability of the state to fund public education. So, so, you know, presenting factual information to legislators, you know, I think's important because if you just throw it out there as a, as a fair tax, everybody wants a fair tax. But I don't know that a lot of people want a tax that's going to cripple their child's school.
I can, I can make the attempt to have a person come to present that really has done the research.
Just as a note, the, the regional meeting that we're holding here on November 3rd, the topic is the fair tax. That will be the presentation, will be a fair tax, and I don't know...
Oh, that's right.
I'm not, I don't know that it will be Jim Moody, but...
And, and I understand.
It is.
So, so we can...
I wasn't sure if it was or not, if he was doing every one of them or not.
So if we can get the data from there and then bring it forward with or without an additional presentation on the 17th.
Yeah, I don't know that we need a presentation, but having the actual facts in hand so that...
I think that's...
So everybody's kind of on the same page.
We can get that. In fact, I think we can get that, that information.
And it was a good presentation that, I don't know if, if any of you went to the...
I've seen that before.
Mr. Moody's, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was there, and Dr. Ritter was...
But I think we do a disservice if it's, if a bunch of school board members talk to each other about how this is going to hurt schools, because we all kind of, I'm assuming most school districts across the state of Missouri are going to say this is not good for school districts.
More than we will.
If we all just talk amongst ourselves, that's not going to get us very far down the road.
Any other legislative issues? I think the, where does the, the bill stand? Senate Bill 54 revised or whatever it may be?
That's up to us, and we are needing to put together something as far as policy and talk about policy in a little bit here, but anyway, that's where we're at with that. Again, you know, I think that's, Mr. McKenna is needed, along with the cabinet, needs to work through that.
Yep, great. Future issues?
We have a couple. First of all, I, I want to mention that we pulled together, the school district pulled together all the different organizations out there that support students, and we call it Kids First, and a great turnout. And really, the reason we did that was to see if there were any kind of gaps as far as support for students, as well as if there's a duplication of effort. And what was interesting in that meeting, and of course, I see Claudette, you were there, Teresa, anyway, we had a number of people that were there, and through that audience and through the discussions, we began, began to realize that a lot of these organizations are very sincere, but they were offering what they thought needed, the kids' needs were. And after a tremendous presentation by Jean Grable, who canvassed and surveyed our people and families, developed a list of needs, and it kind of woke people up a little bit as far as what the needs are. And the number one need was food, and we're talking food in the summertime, we're talking food over the weekend, in other words, kids need to eat. And the number two thing was getting kids to school, the transportation piece. And then there were a number of others as well, and through that, we're going to continue to have, bring those people to the table, and hopefully we can develop a fail-safe system where kids feel safe, feel comfortable, and are, are taken care of. And what we have found is that in the top four countries across the world, in every case, in every one of those situations, the kids are coming to school ready to learn, and in some cases, as old as seven years. And so I think if we could pull that off as a community, that would be an awesome thing. And it just, it was just a great conversation, I want to mention that. Another thing I want to mention, by the way, is that our attendance is really strong this year, and knock on wood, but I do think that a lot of it has to do with how these people are helping us with kids and, and students and what their needs are. So anyway, that's one thing I want to mention. I have one other thing, but I'll wait that, with that till last, because I do think Mr. Lee has something, he's going to update us on as far as the ad hoc committee.
Great, let's go to that. And, and in advance, I want to thank you for chairing this committee to really look at our, our board functioning and board policies, and well, I'll just let you talk.
Before I do that, I'd like to make a comment on, on what Dr. Ritter just talked about, because I, I know one of the key strengths, and we've heard it many times in, in virtually every study that's been done, is the collaboration that goes on in the community is really a strong, they call it, you know, a big plus for us. And, and I think, following up on what you just said, one of the things that I'm seeing is all of the studies that are being done, all of the efforts are being done, whether it's a city, the county, the chamber, are hitting pieces that will affect us in some respect.
Yep.
And, and I think the, it's really going to be important for us to get together, and, and only reason I bring it up is one of the, one of the groups that is, is out there is the P-20 Council, the Ozarks, which OTC is heading up, which is made up of several of these groups. And one, one of the discussions that we had was how do we get, and the best example I can think of is virtually every strategic plan, every study has said... these groups. And one, one of the discussions that we had was how do we get, and the best example I can think of is virtually every strategic plan, every study, has said early childhood.
Yep.
And that's not just in Springfield, that's pretty much everywhere in the state.
Right, yeah.
You know, that this is one of the key things if we're gonna solve this problem. And, and I think that somehow, you know, we've got to start breaking down the silos between all the groups and start connecting the dots, and, and getting the community and everybody to understand that, you know, that's an investment, and make, connecting the dots, you spend a dollar here, you save several dollars down the road. And so, and I'm hoping that that group will be one of them that will help bring this together, because there are so many common things to do that. And so, that was just, that's more comment.
And, and the Community Foundation's First Grants Panel, I'm.
Absolutely.
Chairing next week, I'm co-chairing next week with Gloria Galanis, and we'll look at that first round of grant requests that are challenge requests, to, and, and you can see, go down the list and see these, these key issues.
And if there's that many people singing off the same hymn book, there's no reason something can't happen.
Yeah.
If somebody just puts it all together, and so.
The real exciting thing about this, by the way, is Becky Morgan's back at it.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, she could get away from this, and it was amazing how she kinda was out in front with everything, and United Way made a very, very smart move by hiring her, part-time, of course, and she knows that's not part-time. But anyway, just a wonderful, wonderful feeling to have her around, so, okay.
Right here.
Okay, item two. I appreciate the opportunity to head up the ad hoc committees, to kinda look at our board function, and, and as we've said before, you know, it wasn't a, looking for a problem that was there, it was more or less, how do we continuously improve the operation to the board, and how do we perform and act better? Certainly wanna thank Mr. Renner and Ms. Twitty, who served on it along with Jerry Harmison and Debbie Tolliver. We should be bringing, not should be, we will be bringing something back November 1st as part of the strategic discussion of some operating guidelines or principles or model of governments, governance, governments, that's governance, as far as a board, that the group put together, and should have some recommendations to, to take a look at policy, some of our board policies. Well, virtually all of our board policies is 17-years-old, are 17-years-old. And so, some of them are out of date, obviously all of them are out of date, need to be updated, but some of them aren't, can't be updated because they're law, so we just need to look at them to make sure we tweak them. So, and the opportunity to look at committees, there'll be some recommendations as we look at the organization, and some recommendations there. So hopefully we'll bring that to the, to the board on November 1st, and then the board can take a look at that and, and take whatever actions that you all see fit to move forward with that. So, it was a good process, it was an interesting process, and you'll hear more about it in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Renner, you have anything to add? It's a good, it was a good balance of personalities.
Good committee.
Yeah, it was a very good committee.
Any other issues we need to discuss?
I do have one thing, I, you know, we are, I is looking into, really looking at technology, one-to-one technology for students, and what's amazing, I wanna bring this to the board right tonight, is what's amazing is, we have quite a few districts, for instance, Monette is gonna roll out January 1st, all students are gonna be one-to-one technology in their district. We have Willard, who is looking to be there start of next year. We have Reed Springs, who is looking at it starting next year as well. We have a number of other districts that are looking to include it in any kind of bond initiative in the near future. We are looking at it, and Mr. Green, along with, who heads up our technology, along with Anita Kissinger and her team, Calvin, you're here, aren't you? Yeah, there he is. I know, and Robin, I know you're all looking at this, and we're, we're being deliberately slow to make sure, because I have a feeling that in three years, the iPad is probably gonna be in the museum, and there'll be something new, and really the latest one is this, is where you take this, and it becomes, you put two legs out, it'll, you could put out a keyboard or anything you want, and that's what they think's gonna happen. So we gotta be careful and be very deliberate as we move through this, and, and make sure that our staff and students, the students are always gonna be excited. What was amazing is, in the student advisory that I had last week, it shocked me, and Donna, you were there, that the students were uncomfortable with the iPads. And in fact, I even had, had to argue with them as far as it being a good instrument, a good tool. I don't think they want them. I really felt from that group that they want the iPhone, and they want us to, to look at that technology and wait for the technology as opposed to, and I was, that was rather revealing as well. So I, I just feel that you're gonna hear all kinds of talk out there regarding all kinds of districts around us, looking at and moving forward, and I think, I think that's something we need to pay attention to, but the learning model needs to precede all that, and then eventually it needs, the technology needs to support that learning model and accelerate the, the learning. And so I just wanna make that statement tonight, that, because I have a feeling that's gonna get out there rather quickly. Okay?
It was pretty easy to buy a piece of hardware for everyone, it's pretty hard to know how to use it to the best advantage of the students.
Well, it's really bad, it's just like a car, before you drive it off the parking lot, it's old. And so the same thing is true for technology, so, anyway, I wanna kinda give you a heads up.
Any other issues? Your financial and operations report is on board docs, do your plus deltas, we have no need to go into executive session tonight. We haven't even spent an hour here, but I think we can adjourn. Mr. Lee moved to adjourn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Yep, don't need a second on that. Thank you all very much.